Okay, again, it's 7:05, we're gonna call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen, April 28, 2016, to order. First order of business is review and approval of minute meetings, which we have none to approve today. Next item is confirmation of future meeting dates. Right now, we have May 2nd, May 3rd, May 5th, which are private town meeting. And then, we also have May 9th? May 9th, 10th, or what? And 12th?
If we need a second week.
If we need a second week? God help me if we need a second week! And the next scheduled board meeting is May 17th. Is that okay with everybody?
It is.
Okay. Item four on the agenda is citizen speak. Do anybody like to address the board? See, no, move on. Okay, item five on the agenda is a conference with the Public Library Trustees. And is Will here, or?
No.
Okay. Okay, Chris.
So, I gave you a package of what I'm gonna go through tonight. So, Will apologized he wasn't able to be here tonight.
You don't have electronic, do you?
I'm sorry?
You didn't have to bring electronic with you? Because we could throw it up.
I didn't bring it. We could put it up there.
Will said it wasn't necessary to put it on the screen.
Okay.
I asked him.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, no problem.
Anyways, I don't plan to take too much of your time. I'm really just here to kinda update you from the trustees, the Board of Trustees, so, on the Kidder Building. So, you know, we've been having some conversations on the Kidder Building as of late, so just wanted to give you some background. So, first, really, just to let you know, there is a trust that was, actually, the Kidder Building was bequeathed to the town in a deed from 1928. And that deed provides for the property to be held in trust by the trustees for the purposes that I'm gonna outline. So, the building must be used for the library and for the benefit of the inhabitants of the town. The funds from a rental agreement or a sale, if we decide to do that, would also have to be used for the library or the benefit of the town. The building can be sold, but there's a lot of specifics in the agreement about how that would happen. And the trustees, again, they must invest the money for, again, the purposes of the library. So, the deed is very specific of what they wanted to leave that building for. If we did decide to sell the building for another purpose other than the library, it would require some significant, you know, legal things. We'd have to go to a town meeting, get two-thirds town meeting vote, and it would also require approval by the Supreme Judicial Court or the mass probate court. So, it's a kind of a long process and lengthy process if we end up going that direction. The property has been rented for quite a few years by Discovery Schoolhouse, and they operate there, both a nursery and also an after-school program there. And they have an arts program as well downstairs that services actually multiple ages. It's not just young children. So, the reason that we're looking at this is the trustees, just to give you a little idea, you know, we just really, at this point, want to let you know, we're looking at trying to come up with a strategic vision for the building. You know, what are we gonna do with it long-term? So, short-term, it's fine, it's being rented, and the agreement is continuing. But the current building, as we look at it and the usage that it provides, doesn't really support our mission, you know, going forward. And it doesn't meet our new long-range plan. So, we just finished last year the long-range plan, and that was approved by the state, excuse me, and, you know, we're just looking at, how does this actually meet our needs? And it doesn't really. The support, the maintenance, and the oversight of the building divert, you know, valuable resources. You know, one of those resources is obviously Will, as our director. He spends a lot of time, you know, having to oversee and manage the building, and then also the facilities building. So, Bill Ritchie has been enormously helpful in helping, you know, to fix and resolve small issues, large issues, or whatever with that building. But, again, it's not really a library benefit or a town benefit, so we just, you know, it diverts his resources as well. The director himself does small day-to-day repairs. The building has ongoing issues, little water leaks. He paints, he cleans it up, he does most of this work himself. And then, the rental income that we get also does support, you know, income. So, most of the rental income that we get actually is paid out to just support the maintenance of the building. It's not like we're making a lot of money on it. And I don't know if any of you have been in the Kidder Building. A long time ago, excuse me, when my kids were young, which the oldest one is 35 now, so that was a while ago, the building, you know, has mildew downstairs. It was, you know, it was deteriorating way back then, and it's now even more so. So, it's gonna take significant funds long-term, you know, to keep that building going. And we don't know when, you know, when or if that's gonna happen, or something might happen, so. And as landlord of the library, we are responsible for the capital maintenance. So, although the tenant does provide some, you know, some money towards the maintenance of the building, large items would fall under our jurisdiction, and we'd have to pay for those. And we're estimating that the cost would be pretty significant over the next several years. So, Bill Ritchie, again, has come into the building with us. You know, the trustees have done a tour. We did a tour recently, we did one a few years ago as well, and walked through the whole building. But Bill Ritchie went through the whole building and gave us, you know, kind of a list of all the different types of maintenance and repairs that would need to be done, both short and long-term. And the next page is really to outline for you, you know, just some of the costs of those. So, annually, actually, before I start there, let me just say, before the Discovery Schoolhouse even came into operation in there, they put in over $30,000 worth, you know, of their own money to before they could actually start the school. So, there was some significant work that needed to be done. They pulled out carpeting, they painted flooring, you know, the yard work. A lot of work was done on it. But ongoing, we're still looking at, you know, again, using, you know, Bill Ritchie as an annual maintenance of $18,000 to $15,000 a year on that building, just annual maintenance. And, you know, I've listed some of the items here, you know, gutters, minor repairs to the downspouts, snaking outside the drains to prevent internal flooding, replacing lighting the lasts, window repairs, repairs to the front steps, and maintenance of the heating system. I believe the furnace in that building is probably as old as the building, so I don't know what that means, but it's pretty scary. And I don't know if for any of you that have been there recall, the back of the building, there's a steps that go downstairs from the parking lot directly down to the basement. And this past year, they were lucky, but in past years, with all the snow, there's no cover over that part of the building. And so, snow and water comes into that building down there, melts, freezes, and then gets into the building. So, it's a constant, you know, the director of the nursery program is shoveling to get it out there, but, you know, they don't use the back door to get it out, which is unfortunate during the winter months, but it really should have a cover over it, it should be enclosed. Again, a very expensive repair that we're not looking to do at this point. Some of the larger repairs that Bill has identified for us are the fence, either repair or replacement, at, you know, probably up to about $12,000. Gutters and downspout repair, estimated around thirty, a little over $3,000. Entrance ramp and patching. Again, there's a handicap ramp that goes up, you know, we've had to do a lot of repairs to that ramp recently, and also to the doors. We replaced the doors recently there. A new ramp door, over $2,000, new locks, almost $1,000. And then, the slate roof, you know, is looking like it might need some repairs as well in different sections, so that's another $4,500. And the parking lot needs repairs, we don't have an estimate at this point in time that we're looking at, so. So, some of the options for consideration, and these aren't things that we necessarily vetted through yet with the trustees, but just in looking what we have, we can obviously continue to rent the building, whether we rent it to the Discovery Schoolhouse or to another tenant that may be a little bit longer-term financially viable for us. You know, he doesn't make a lot of money there, and sometimes he isn't able to fill the school, so, you know, he's not able to put a lot of money into actually the building repairs himself. He's aware of this, you know, conversation that we're having. We've met with him, and he knows what's going on. So, he has a lease that's ongoing, and if we were to make any decisions, he would be involved in that. So, just to let you know, he's aware of that as well. We could turn the building back into library use. The library that we have is beautiful, but wouldn't it be nice if we had another one? But another building would be a huge, huge cost to bring that building up to code and make it ADA compliant, which we would have to do before we could open it. And that would require, you know, we've estimated that, and this is a very, very, you know, cost that we haven't really fully vetted through, but we're talking over $600,000. We would need a new heating system, we'd have to rewire the whole building, strip it, paint it, new flooring, the parking lot. We'd have to get new furnishings in the building, computers, shelving, and then we would have to hire staff. And because it's a whole 'nother building, we're looking at probably at least two full-time and maybe two part-time staff to support that. So, that would add to our ongoing annual, you know, budget, which we're all trying to cut our budget, so we're not looking that we would have that, but, you know, that could be another $150,000 annually just for staff to support another building, you know, for the library. One of the other options is we could actually sell the property, so, and we could use the funds to support the library's mission. So, and we could allow the town to rent the building, or we could, you know, allow the town to purchase it. But again, it's very specific in the agreement that we can't undersell the building, so we can't sell it to the town cheaply, as much as that would be nice, so you could use it for something good. We have to get, you know, the value, the current value of the property for the library, according to the trust. And if we were to rent it or purchase it for the town, again, there's kind of a long process I've gone through here, so, you know, the trustees would need to vote to do that, and then go out and actually sell it. So, it would be a significant timeframe, so. So, the last page is really just a, you know, kind of a little calendar of event. You know, this is probably a three-year process that we're looking at this point. So, we're beginning this process tonight with really just kind of sharing with the Board of Selectmen what we're looking to do, and with the town. We're planning to schedule some public forums to invite the community. We're open to other ideas for the building or what to do with it, if anyone has any, you know, call, join us, whatever, we're looking for input. We'll also be meeting with the planning board. You know, there was a master plan, you know, created, and we'd like to see how this, you know, this use of that property, if something was to change, would fit into that, and how it would meet with the neighbors and the butters. So, if anything was to happen, we would have meetings with them as well and go through the process. So, again, just a sharing, you know, here tonight to let you know all and be transparent of what we're doing. So, I don't know if you have any questions, or?
Just one, Chris. You were mentioning if the library were to turn the building over to the town, that we'd have to pay fair value for it, but then, earlier, you said that the building must be used either for the library or for the benefit of the inhabitants of the town.
Yeah.
Wouldn't any municipal use of that building be for the benefit of the inhabitants of the town?
They would, but it all, it's a little vague in the trusts, and I think we would probably need some more legal guidance on that, because it says for the library use, and that's very strong wording, and then also the inhabitants of the town. But it also does specifically say if we change it for the town use, we'd have to go through some more legal things, so. We haven't hired any, I mean, we did have the town, Attorney John Flynn did look at the agreement and just kind of provide us some high-level guidance of what he saw in here, but we haven't gone into any legal detail yet, because we haven't even made any decisions of what to do.
Okay.
But certainly, we would want to do that, so. I don't want to present that I know all those specifics, so.
Right, right.
You know, we'd like to give it to Bill Ritchie to have for a place to store all of his things. I don't know if anybody would want that.
Well, we discussed that.
I'm sure he could come up with lots of good reasons.
We discussed that possibility a little bit, but I guess it doesn't have the garage space that he would.
Yeah, probably not, but.
Chris, you said that the town could obviously rent it, and Bill's looked through this and sees that it needs a lot of capital improvements.
Yeah.
So, obviously, you're gonna be vetting this with the rest of the trustees and getting public input, so it's really a deteriorated building, though, at this point in time.
It is a deteriorated building. Yeah, I mean, it's a beautiful building. If you go over there and look, it's all brick, it's a gorgeous building. But the walls inside, the wiring, the floors, they put a pantry in the building, so there's a sink on this, you know, on the higher level, the really, the main level or whatever, there's a sink and refrigerator, but there's no stove, so there's not really even a full kitchen in there. The bathrooms are really, really intuited.
I'd have to take a walk through, but the first thing that came to my mind, and I know that you'll have community input, was a teen center, so.
I, same thought, same exact thought.
So, I mean, that was the first thing that kind of popped into my.
Or a community center, something like that.
Correct, correct.
Well, I was gonna bring that up too, because, you know, having just gotten off the campaign trail, that's what has come up a lot, is the idea of a teen center and youth services, and, you know, it's possible we could get some funding that could help with the rehab of the building.
The problem is, will you go from there, though, how you staff it? How you, you know, those are all issues, but I absolutely agree that.
Yeah, that'd be a longer conversation with a lot of departments, but it's something to think about, is potential use.
Right, yeah.
We know there's a need for some kind of services for teens.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think if the town had, you know, a real desire to use the building, we would probably get into the legal jargon much, you know, much more specifically to see what that would mean, so, to do that. So, like I said, we don't have any opinions at this point at all on where we're going, so.
Yeah, I think just off the top of the head, that would be.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Or could it be shared use? You know, there are two levels there.
Yeah.
I remember going to the Kidder Library as a kid to go to the library, so.
Yeah.
Like your kids' person.
Yeah.
And generations beforehand, it is a beautiful building.
It is, yeah.
Obviously, it needs a lot of capital investment.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great. And I guess I just wanted to say one other thing, if you don't mind, while I'm here, is that I signed an agreement today with Beta Engineering, so almost a year ago, we took the tree down at the front of the library, and we had hopes of getting the area at least minorly, I'll say landscaped, before we put a turnaround in there, and that never did happen. So, the trustees have voted, we are putting a turnaround within the parking lot, so that if you come into the building and you don't find, or into the parking lot and you don't find a place to park, you'll be able to rotate around again and circle around without coming out onto that main road, which, you know, we've had a lot of traffic issues there, which we're still trying to deal with, but. So, we've talked with John Thompson, the town engineer, he helped us with kind of a conceptual design, but just because of all the things on his plate, isn't available to be able to help us do this, and we didn't want to wait much longer. So, he actually recommended somebody that he's used quite a bit, so, and we just signed an agreement. So, this will get us to get a final design plan and get the RFPs completed, an RFP completed, so we can go out for the bid process. So, the goal, or, you know, the hope is that we can maybe have this done this summer, if at all possible. So, I just want to just give you a heads-up, if you see any people walking around out there or things happening, it's gonna start, so.
All right, great.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, thank you.
Item six on the agenda is a public hearing on 310 Granite Ave, lit sign. Hi, Ned.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having us back. Ned Corcoran, attorney on behalf of Super Petroleum, Inc., and I'm joined by Mike Bogazia, who is the owner of Super Petroleum. Now, the last time we were here, a month ago, we were talking about approval of a sign that had, I don't even have the proper renderings, but essentially, would look like this, with the Super Petroleum remaining on top, that would have the edge lighting. These two panels switched, with Super SP Mart on the middle, and then Milton Auto Care in the middle, and the third, and then the LED panels. As you're driving, this is the image driving northbound with the panels alighted. This is actually an image driving southbound, showing the effect of the limousine glass that covers the LED panels. It's there, it's visible, but it's faint and somewhat difficult to see. Last Wednesday evening, I believe, the Wednesday or Thursday, we had a meeting with neighbors on the property at the request of the board to look at whether it would be feasible to lower the sign. And we looked at a couple of options. One, to cut the legs. What this doesn't show, this is a photograph, and the renderings have changed, but it's a photograph that was taken, I think, March of last year, before Super Petroleum bought the premises. Since then, Mike has installed a planter that's about two and a half feet tall, sort of builds up from the bottom, so that's not shown. We looked at reducing the height by about two and a half feet by cutting the legs at the bottom, and as the evening went on, Mike and his guy, Mike Palermo, came up with the idea of cutting from the top. And so, the idea is to cut out the larger of these two panels and lower the Super Petroleum panel in place. And so, it would look, and I think I emailed, but I don't know if you got color copies. So, ultimately, it would look as originally proposed. You see this SP Mart on the second panel? And now, as proposed, we would eliminate the SP Mart panel, and we would lower the Super Petroleum panel into that location. We thought at the time when we were talking about it that we might be able to reduce the size of the Super Petroleum panel to fit within the SP Mart frame, but it's a, it is a standalone glass box that was manufactured for that location, so it would, it wouldn't work to insert that into the lower frame. It would be somewhat expensive to manufacture a new for that. So, we're proposing that we would simply lower, lower the frame and remove that middle frame and then lower it. So, the reduction in height would go from about 16 feet to 12 and a half feet. It's about three and a half feet reduction. And hopefully, we think it can work. We've had conversations with the neighbors. No one's entirely happy about any of the results, I would suggest, but I think that, I trust that we've come to a reasonable compromise on the issue. In exchange for that, the one other thing that Mike is, would be requesting is that we had talked about the sign clutter and removing a number of the other signs. We're requesting permission to retain the Super Petroleum panels, which are unlit, which are on the canopy, one facing to the north and one facing to the south.
Okay, so just the side?
Just the sides. And part of the reason is that as you approach from the south, the combination of the foliage of the trees and otherwise makes it more difficult to pick up the sign. So, the ability to see those signs as you're coming north and south, we think is important. Open it up to questions.
Okay.
Or comments.
Any questions? Then I'll open it up.
My only question I want to hear is with the neighbors and the butters.
Okay, then I'll open it up to any of the butters or any of the neighbors, if they have any questions, comments, or? Anybody? Sure, come on up.
Yeah.
You're gonna have to come up, because otherwise, nobody on TV can hear you, so. Yeah, just, yeah.
Want me to move the microphone for you?
That might be a good idea, if you can, yeah.
If you need it back, we'll pass it back to you.
I'm Kathy Fararo, and I live across the street from the gas station. And we did have a very good meeting last week, and a lot of neighbors did come. A lot of them were deeply concerned about it, and the lighting has been dimmed, and they said that they would put that into the permit, that it would, must be continued to be dimmed, and lowered. So, we've considered a lot of that. I did speak to the Joe Prondak, and he was concerned about the original permitting for that sign, and that legality of it all. So, I don't know whether, you know, how important that would be, you know, like with all these discussions, or if it would be appealed or whatever, you know, so that is still an open question as far as we seem to be concerned at this time.
Okay. Anybody else?
Can you also then have Joe address that question?
Sure. This is a new application, so I don't think there's a problem with a video of Joe.
Hi, Amy Linay in Granite Ave, oh, sorry, was on Granite Ave, I'm now on Grafton Ave. I just want to reiterate, you know, I think people put a lot of effort into this process. I wasn't at the neighborhood meeting, so I apologize, but I think it was acknowledged that nobody's completely happy with the end result. This proposal is still outside the guidelines that are written, that may not be written perfectly, but really, it is the selectman's job and part of their responsibility to make sure that the permit and the process is protecting the town. And I just wanted to make sure I read a little bit from this. So, "For approval of a sign not otherwise allowed," in the chapter, "The Board of Selectmen shall determine that the applicant has a reasonable need for the sign." So, obviously, there's a need for the sign. I don't know if there's a need for the, someone referred to it as clutter, the extra signs, but it's the selectman's responsibility to make sure there's a need for it. "There's a reasonable basis for exempting the sign from the applicable standards." So, I don't know if we've met that. "And the exemption of the sign from the standards will not have a substantial detrimental effect on the community." So, it's in a really, it's really close to the neighbors. I think those three bullets are your responsibility to make sure they're met. And I would also ask that if in the permit, it's an annually renewable permit, so that we make sure that everything's kept to the, to what is written at this point.
Okay, anybody else? Joe, could you answer the question that?
I'm not sure. Joe Prondak, Building Commissioner, the question came up as to the legality of the existing sign, and it is my opinion, as has been stated on the record and in writing, and Town Council's opinion, that the existing sign is not grandfathered. However, essentially, what they've done now is they've applied for a new permit for this existing sign.
Right.
So, if the board were to grant relief in whatever form, that would kind of put that issue to bed.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's the.
Yeah, I believe you're right.
If I can just respond, we agree to disagree on the legality of the sign.
Right.
We're approaching this as sort of a, as a new application to re-permit this sign to the life of Super Petroleum's ownership of the property. Rather than fight the legality of the existing sign.
Right, I understand.
So, what we're trying to do is arrive, we think, at a reasonable compromise. The sign is necessary, the auto care portion of the sign is critical to the ongoing ability of the station to operate, and so, we're asking the board to find that the standards approached have been met, and grant that, grant this permit. I don't think it's appropriate to grant it on an annual basis. I think it's appropriate to grant it for the life of the, of the operation of the, of the station by this owner, and a new owner can, at a future date, can do what it needs to do to either re-permit or replace, but I do think in this case, it ought to be permitted. We agree that the limousine glass would remain on the north-facing side to dim the LEDs as they face the neighborhood. And so, with that, I would ask the board to grant the relief that we're requesting.
Yeah, I can't say, I mean, in terms of, you know, is there, is there a need for signage out there? Clearly, you know, unlike other properties, you know, the building doesn't sit on the street, you know, on the curb, it's set back, so without a sign out here, nobody would know. So without a sign out here, nobody would know that the building even existed. So I think, to that degree, there is a need for a sign out there.
That's particularly true with respect to the auto care portion of the property, because the auto care, the canopy and the sign obviously are visible from Granite Avenue. And once you approach the building from either side, you can see that the SP Mart is also there. Those are visible from Granite Avenue. Unless you're on Wood Street, which is the side street, you have no idea that there's an auto care business there. It's tucked around the building, it's not otherwise advertised.
Yep.
And so we need, Mike needs the presence of that Milton Auto Care sign along with the Super Petroleum sign on the panel. The pricing issues is also significant. The gasoline business is a very price-sensitive business. They are checking prices almost hourly compared to what's happening elsewhere. And the adjustment of, up or down of a penny on the price of gas can have thousands of dollars of impact on a daily basis in terms of volume of gas sold. So it's important to be able to advertise what your pricing is. One of the issues, and Michael will deal with it, is that the limousine glass on the other side makes it difficult for customers to see what the prices are.
In the daylight, it's virtually impossible.
And a number of his customers have suggested that he's trying to hide something, because he's not showing the public clearly what the prices are, that somehow he's not being fair in his dealing with the public.
They're telling me.
Yeah. Now, I haven't been by it from that direction at night. Is it pretty clearly visible at night?
The green lettering appears to be a little brighter than the red. For some reason, the green numbering for the diesel shows up better at night, all times, through the limousine glass.
Yeah, I mean, I know I've been by it during the day, and you can't see it at all. It's just not visible. Or, you know, I mean, if you stare really hard, I mean, if you drive by, you won't be able to, you won't be able to read it.
Is the limousine glass only on the north-facing side?
Yes.
No, we put both, but we put both, but we put much more here. We put much more.
It's much darker on the south-facing. The side that faces to the neighborhood is very dark.
See, initially, anyway, initially, we tried different kinds of tent. The guy came three days, and he said, you know what, just kill it. Kill it. Just do whatever. And then he started laughing at me, and started arguing with the sign guy about the limousine sign. He said, "Just kill it, do whatever you want." And initially, we did that to stop the glare. I don't want anybody to have a glare. I don't want somebody in their house to watch TV, they see green on red.
Sure.
And I tried to work the neighborhood. So I went to, I said, "Okay, just kill it." And then, I'm trying to have this meeting to end it, hopefully, in good way, hopefully, and hopefully benefit everybody. And it's a pleasure for me actually to keep coming here and meet you guys, but I can't keep doing it forever. I've got a million things, believe me, to do.
Yeah, I can well imagine.
And you guys got a million things, but hopefully, we ended in good way today. At the sign, I never in my life worked so hard to please anybody. I went, I know I'm getting older, but I never went that far. I had my radio in every town, but this is the most interesting and challenging way in the chapter of my life. And I need to end it in good way. I'm trying to live, everybody, if they say I have a misery, I like to live it, so I correct it. To me, I don't want to go into thinking somebody, there's animosity or vendetta, or I don't want to live it, or I don't want to go into that mentality, or somebody focus, just whatever, doesn't please them, because I'm trying, I went, you can hardly see it. And now, the diesel, maybe 10% visible. I went today afternoon, the gas, no visibility.
From the north side.
Especially in the summer. In the summer, you have a long day with the sun and everything else. It can become visible maybe eight o'clock, we close at 10, whatever, 11, two, three hours. And the gas sensitivity, as Ned says, is very.
Well, I guess that was my question, is it visible at night? Because, I mean.
When it gets dark, it's a little bit visible.
Okay.
And.
And I guess then my follow-up question to that is during, because really, you should be able to, I mean, I've driven by it, and, I mean, if you're trying, you're a distracted driver if you're trying to read the price of that sign, because you cannot see it.
You think it's broken or something.
Yeah, you can't see it. So, I mean, that concerns me, that, I think, one, really to address that issue, and I don't know whether it's capable of being done, but if, and it's something perhaps Mike can check in with his sign guy, and if there's a solution, we can come back and apply to amend the permit. But the question would be whether he's capable of moderating, increasing the intensity in moderating it on a timer or some way so that during the day.
So it dark, it dims down.
It would dim, and in the day, it might become more visible. We'd need to test that, meet with the neighbors, see how it would work before we come back and request that. But at this point, we're not. You're not asking.
We don't have that.
See, I know what the neighbors need, and believe me, I'm not gonna go, I've been here for a year. I'm not gonna go and be, come back again for this, hopefully, come back again, maybe something else, nothing to do with the station or business. But, you know what I mean? I don't want to go back about this, I want to end it. And last meeting, I was very happy meeting some neighbors, and I said to Ned, "I give up SP Mart." SP Mart, to me, it is important as far as my trademark, and people, some people assume I have a garage store, some people don't, but it's okay, it's not a deal breaker. I said, "You know what, give up this sign and lower yours." And the guy gave me an estimate of $4,500 to do it, and it's gonna be a lot of, I'd like to be there when he's doing it, if you guys approve it. It's gonna be a really heavy-duty task to do it. And I think, I think this is very reasonable, and I think if they give me the chance, they'd be very happy.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I do like the, you know, certainly the 12 and a half feet compared to the 16 feet is a substantial improvement, you know, in terms of height. I don't know how high other gas signs are, but this certainly puts it down more in line with, you know, standards, I think, in other communities, so.
Are there any other comments from the audience?
Oh.
I just didn't follow up to what your panel just said.
Microphone, yeah.
I just want to make two more points. One, it's okay to say no. The reason we're here is the sign is outside the guidelines. Period, end of sentence. So all of this retrofitting and the fact that you can't see it from the other way is not because the citizens were overbearing and pushed all of this. It's because the sign is outside the guidelines of the town, and the brightness of the sign came along without the appropriate permitting. So I think we just have to level set and make sure we remember, this is not because, we're not here because we're bullying anybody or anything like that. We have guidelines, and I know they're a perfect guideline, but the auto care mart, if we were presented with a sign that was in the guidelines from the beginning, of course you should have a sign, there's no question about that. Of course you should have, we should advertise our businesses in town. That's all great. It's when we start, it's not, it's okay to say no, that this isn't within the guidelines that we have written. And I think we just keep going circular and forgetting that that's the point.
First of all, first of all, even if the sign were two feet high, it would be outside the guidelines, because it's a lit sign.
Right.
So by definition, it's outside the guidelines.
But then you make the guidelines.
Yeah, but our job is both, you know, we have some requirement to, you know, to make sure that the business community itself, what little business community we have here is also representative. You know, we represent the entire town, the business community is part of the entire town, so, you know, we represent the neighbors too. We want to make sure that everybody is treated fairly.
Yes, and upholding what we have written as a bylaw. Absolutely.
Well, we all admit that our bylaw right now is in desperate need of modernization, and it is.
Right, but not modernization, it depends what you mean by modernization. Our bylaw needs updated. It doesn't mean that we're saying, oh, we should bring in bright signs. That's up for discussion, but we do have something written today. I think we can't dismiss that.
Yeah, and like we've gone through it, we've gone through it. Virtually every sign in the town, you know, if you say one sign, and if it's on two sides already, it's two signs now. So it's, you know, I mean, it is very difficult to be within the guidelines of this bylaw. It really is.
Well, with due respect, I think most of the businesses in East Milton are within the bylaw and do a great job. And I don't think that this gentleman hasn't tried, it's just that he's trying to retrofit a sign that wasn't presented within the guidelines and the mission or the spirit of the bylaw.
Hi, Cindy.
Hi, Cindy Christians in 59 Collmar Street. I wanted to let you guys know that East Milton Neighborhood Association didn't get the information together quickly enough to actually have our board come up with our recommended statement. I'm not saying that it's anybody's problem, we didn't have the information, but we only got this 12 and a half foot sign today. I can tell you, though, as representing the board, that East Milton Neighborhood Association's board expects the town to ensure that as a business in East Milton grows, the town adheres to the master plan recommendation where it states, "We want business growth that is in harmony with the character of the town." And we believe that we understand that as business in East Milton grows, that there will need to be exceptions made, but we ask that you tread carefully when you do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is that everyone?
I think so.
We've got a lot of people here.
Yeah, I hadn't seen anybody else. Any other questions at all? Comments?
Paul Darby, Thistle Avenue, and I was part of that group that met with Mike the other night, and I thought we came up with a good compromise. We'll keep the light down on Kathy's living room. So, like you said, I think it should be ended tonight. Go forward. Put this to rest.
Thank you. Thanks.
Do we have the language of the bylaw with us?
I don't personally.
We don't have it, Ned? I don't have it, it's not in our materials, but, because I do think there are specific findings we need to make if it's a new sign application.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Joe, do you have the bylaw with you?
I don't have the bylaw with me, but in my report to you, I think dated.
The hardship, the.
Right, yeah. Great.
I put a specific section in there that said, "Relief required," and I think it's spelled out the specific sections that.
That's not in our materials tonight.
Ooh. Amy has, Amy has a copy of the. Yeah, we don't have anything in our. There's nothing in our agenda.
Thanks, Joe.
And that encompasses all of the signage.
Okay. Pass that to the chair.
Okay.
Do we have the bylaw that Amy just?
Yeah, because this doesn't really cover the three.
They're on the town website, can we just pull them up online?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if you go to your April 11th Board of Selectmen meeting, it's there.
It's there?
Okay.
That's Joe's memo.
Yeah, he really doesn't give us the.
I have a copy of the opposed vote.
The three things required for relief.
Yeah, I, for some, I'm trying to get on the internet, and it's not opening up here.
Oh, I can get on the internet. You want the bylaws?
Yeah, you can just pull up this side bylaw.
Bylaws, regulations, general bylaws. Unfortunately, it's not indexed.
It's under Section 3 of the zoning bylaw.
I think that's still the chart.
Under the use provisions.
Section 3 of the general bylaws?
No, the zoning bylaw. It's in an odd location, it's within, it's four paragraphs within the use provisions of the zoning bylaw.
It's under Business District Uses.
That's right, yeah, okay. I thought I had.
It's not in.
Yeah, us.
It's not in the.
Section 3, Part C.
The opinion that was rendered by Lauren Galvin. She spoke more to the issue of grandfather.
Yeah, I don't think she copied any sections of the bylaw.
This is the recommendation that was done for the sleepy sign. Someplace has to talk about relief.
Why they're.
Yes.
I saw this, any place where it talks about relief.
So it's Section 5, under the Business District Use, Section 3, and then go to Section 4.
"There's a reasonable basis for exempting the sign. The applicant has reasonable need for the sign, and the exemption from, the sign from such standards will not have a substantial detrimental effect on the community." Yes, which he's done, he's made a written application. So, so number one, is it, has the applicant demonstrated there's a reasonable need for the sign?
So are we closing the public discussion portion of the hearing and then going on to our deliberation?
I think so.
Okay. So I, well, I mean, I'm happy to get us started on this. I think the applicant has demonstrated a reasonable need for the sign. Clearly, this is a business that's been in this location for a number of years, a number of decades, actually. There have been signs at the location in the past, and this is a situation in which I think the applicant and the neighbors, working together, have really tried to cooperate in good faith and improve the location, improve the signage that removes some of the clutter and the chaos that had existed on a number of, on the canopies, on the ice machine, on the windows. So there's been an effort to reduce the number of the signage, but clearly, there's a need for a gas station to have a sign that shows the gas prices and would advertise the repair shop. So I think the owner has made, the applicant has demonstrated there's a reasonable need for the sign.
Yeah, I agree. I think that, you know, we're always concerned about the neighbors first. I think that that's our obligation, but at the same point in time, the business community, while small, is making it up, is making, is going great lengths to try to accommodate the neighborhood. And I think that last neighborhood meeting was, I think, very beneficial, as we just heard from the last speaker. And while things won't ever be perfect, and we do know that the bylaw needs modernization, at least during this period of time, they've made great strides, having to show, obviously, gas prices. I mean, you can't run a business without showing that. It would be detrimental not to have that.
Great. The second criteria here is that there's a reasonable basis for exempting. The second criteria here is that there's a reasonable basis for exempting the sign from the applicable standards, and the third is that the exemption of the sign from such standards will not have a substantial detrimental effect on the community. I think we can take those-
And I guess, to talk to B first, you know, there's a reasonable basis for exempting the sign. This is a gas station, our current standards would not permit any, any gas station sign. You know, typical, if you go to any community and look at the freestanding gas, none of those would be within our standards. They would all be exempted. They would all be not permitted. So, so I guess, you know, for the most part, what we're looking at here is a, I mean, you can argue height and everything else, but we're looking at basically a standard gas station sign. So, so the, I think the key thing is, the third one is substantial detrimental effect on the community.
And just to the second point, I think the other piece of this is that, we've heard from the applicant that they have a disagreement with town council as to whether the existing sign is grandfathered. So, you know, we've got one opinion, the applicant has another opinion. Though, obviously, the way that's going to get resolved, if there's not an agreement among the parties, is through litigation.
Yes.
And that's additional cost and additional expense and additional uncertainty. So I think that satisfies the second criteria, that there is a reasonable basis for exempting the sign from the standards. For the reasons you've articulated, for the fact that the business, there has been a gas station at this site for a number of decades, that has had a sign that has been a freestanding, a sign, and that the exemption of the sign from the standards will not have a substantial detrimental effect on the community. I think the community and the owner, together here, have made a good showing to work something out. They've reduced the signage, they've eliminated some of the clutter and the chaos. What I heard from Kathy Ferraro, who's one of the immediate abotters, is that she wants the dimming to be, make sure that that's not going to change next year or next month, that that becomes permanent.
Positive.
So we're going to have that, we're going to have that as part of the order.
I agree.
The height has been shortened. So I think there's been a real effort here to work out a good compromise, and from what I'm hearing, I think there has been a good compromise reached. So I believe that all three of these criteria have been satisfied.
I agree as well. I think that we met many times, and Ms. Ferraro spoke about that, the lighting, we heard from the community about the size of the sign, and I think that as they collaborated, the owner and the, and the abotters, I think they came up with a good compromise, yeah.
Can I just develop the applicant, one other question. As I was walking in tonight, someone asked me what company you're working with, what the sign company is. I'm not sure that it matters for my purposes, but since that company's going to be working with you to reduce the height and make these other adjustments, are you working with, what company are you working with?
It's a company called Sinorama, they're on Wood Road and Braintree.
Okay. And they have experience, obviously, doing this sort of thing. Thank you.
I think, though, it's imperative that we have the language, obviously, correct to protect the neighbors as we do move forward.
So we do have a motion here in front of us.
Okay, I'll make a motion based on an application submitted by Attorney Edward Corcoran on behalf of Super Petroleum, Inc., for approval for a freestanding illuminated sign located at the northwesterly corner of the gas station property located at 310 Granite Avenue for the installation of individual panels on the sign structure, signed logos on individual pumps, canopy and awning lettering. A signed permit is hereby approved by the Board of Selectment, subject to the following conditions, limitations, and safeguards. The conditions are as follows. The freestanding illuminated sign will be lowered three and a half feet to a new total of twelve and a half feet. The location is to remain the same as previously permitted by the Planning Board's Site Plan Approval, which is in attached image. The Super Petroleum panel will be agreed to with the Milton Sign Review Committee, a solid aluminum panel, red in color, with blacklit letters, silver in color, stating "Super Petroleum." The next panel will be unlit, the panel will be solid aluminum with lettering stating "MAC", Milton Auto Care. The next section is the LED price panels, as agreed upon by the Milton Sign Review Committee in 2014, with heavy window tinting on the north side of the price numbers to protect the homeowner next door. The price panel numbers will be illuminated only enough to allow visibility of the prices from the roadway, but are not to be intrusive to the adjacent home. The bottom panel stating the site is the state inspection station is allowed, but the panel is to be unlit at all times. The freestanding illuminated sign and supporting structure will be removed upon sale of the property. Daily sign and pump illumination will cease within fifteen minutes of station closing. There will be no unapproved window signage allowed. Unlit Super Petroleum lettering is allowed on station's pump island canopy. Unlit logos on the individual gas pumps stating "Super Petroleum" and a pump number are allowed. Lettering on the station's two unlit doorway awnings is allowed. One, the doorway over the SP Mart entrance will be a red awning with white lettering, and two, the awning over the Auto Care entrance doorway will be white with a black lettering.
I'll second the motion.
Motion being seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none of us in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you to all the neighborhood representatives who worked with the owner on this. I think this is a good result.
Thank you to everyone. Obviously, we have some work left on the bylaw. Yes, we have a lot of work left on the bylaw.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Joe Lynch and, from our DPW, and Martin Pillsbury from-
MAPC.
MAPC, yes, thank you. And this is a follow-up meeting from the last meeting we had. I think we've answered, or we've got answers to some of the questions. Joe's going to give a presentation, which will kind of bring you through, but, but as you'll see as we go through, we've added two more layers on the residential to have it a four-tier system as opposed to a two-tier system, which makes it a little lower for some of the very small homes, and a little larger for some of the, obviously, very, you know, very large homes. So it seemed to be a fairer approach. And, yeah, that's about it, I think.
Sure.
I'm going to turn it over to you, Joe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm Joe Lynch, Director of Public Works for the town of Milton, and with me is Martin Pillsbury from Metropolitan Area Planning Council, MAPC. He's the Senior Environmental Planner, has been working with us now for about eighteen months at least on this process. This is the result of a public hearing that was first held on March 29th. Questions were raised at that. We made note of those, we brought those back, we did research and have answers to most of those for you, and as the presentation goes on, you'll see some of the considerations that came out of those comments that were made as well. So first of all, a question was raised about how were private ways in previous areas considered? And what we determined by looking at the maps in very great detail was, there were some inconsistencies. So in the process of these past few weeks, what we've done is look at those private ways and look at those condominium associations and those large tracts of land that may be served with multiple roadways upon properties, and we dealt with them in exactly the same manner to give them that level of consistency. And as a result, the analyses then needed to change to account for those. And I'll talk about that in a little more detail. We also had a question raised about how were decks included? Even though decks may be slotted and the rain, water gets into it, it's impossible to determine what is under that deck, whether it's pavement, concrete, or gravel, well, drained, or gravel poorly drained. So, in fact, all decks were included as impervious area in the original analysis and ought to be, in our eyes, so that they are no different than a roof or a driveway. Gravel driveways, and in a very similar circumstance, we found that they were done in not a consistent manner. Some gravel showed up as paths and therefore wasn't counted, some gravel showed up as driveways and in fact was counted. We've now gone through and looked at every single parcel and consistently treated gravel driveways the same way, and in exactly the same manner as decks is, gravel isn't gravel consistently across the board. Gravel has various levels of permeability, meaning the ability to pass water and, or the inability to pass water on the converse. So, in fact, all gravel driveways are treated as driveways, as impervious. The question was raised about DCR, roads and parking lots, and other issues, other, excuse me, improvements they have. What we found was that the roadways were in fact counted on the DCR property because they can, were confined within the reservation. And I got to be clear on that, that the Blue Hill Parkway, not confined within the reservation, was counted as a typical roadway in town. And Truman Parkway, in the same fashion, was treated as a typical roadway, as was the Ponce Valley Parkway. However, Unquity Road and Hillside Road and Chikatobit Road, roads in perfect sense of the word, were treated as impervious area, in fact, added to the total of the DCR, which was not correct nor was it, nor was it accurate. So we've since gone back and parsed out all of the roadway aspects of those roadways within the reservation, take them out, didn't count them, but all paths and parking lots and driveways and roof areas and whatnot were in fact included in. So to that end, what we have, and I've been moving through this without even realizing, so I apologize, I want to go back to the top of my presentation. So we talked about consistency of roadways. So this is one example of what we found. People know the area perhaps, but I'll name it, it's not, we're not singling anybody out, just using these as examples for graphic depiction. This is Fuller Village Phase 1, this is the corner of 138 Blue Hill Avenue and Brushel Roadway. What you have is a single tract of land, and if I can just gesture, a single tract of land, which contained on that single tract, multiple buildings with multiple units in each building, those units having their own driveways, and pathways and patios and whatnot, but a network of roadways within, I wish I had a laser pointer, I apologize that I don't, a network of driveways, if you will, that meander throughout the property. In this instance, in the original analysis, this property was treated as impervious of the roofs, the driveways, the roadway network, and the patios, and everything in total, assigned to the one parcel, and therefore would be getting assessed on an impact based on that total impervious area. In a similar fashion, and I apologize for the busyness of this, but this is Winter Valley, if you will. What we have is a roadway of net, excuse me, a development, and I'm going to come to the- I'm trying to speak loudly and use the microphone here. We have a, a network of roadways and driveways, multiple buildings, parking areas and driveways, if you will, and paths between buildings, on multiple tracts of land, but all under the same common ownership. This, in the same sense of analysis, was treated the same as Fuller Village Phase 1, in that all of those driveways, all of those roadways, all those parking lots, and all of those roofs, in total, were added as impervious area and assigned to the total area of the entire parcel, which is under single ownership. So those two examples were treated in a very consistent manner, and therefore, fair manner, at least as compared to each other. And that's just the two of them together, I don't think we need to talk about it in any great detail. Now, here's another example. This is Home, Inc., located off the parkway right next to the high school, and in this, that's the lollipop configuration that will, that's what I refer to it as, lollipop configuration in the center of the slide. And in this instance, we have a single perimeter tract of property, we have multiple buildings, and we have, we have pathways and driveways to parking areas, but we have a roadway network with circles and cul-de-sacs within the development. The difference here is, that roadway network and the cul-de-sacs are what is called laid out, meaning it's got a prescribed dimension, it looks like a road, it's laid out like a road, but it serves the only purpose other than access, it serves no other purpose other than access to and from this development. In the original analysis, this particular property excluded the roadway network from that analysis, and you can see a little more detail there, coming out, and it's highlighted in gray there. All of that area, though it's part of this single parcel of land, was not included in the calculation. So the method that we used going forward from the last meeting to where we are this evening, is we have now gone in on things that are laid out roadways within a tract of land, serving a condominium such as, such as this. All of that area was totaled up by calculation, and then divided by the total number of units within the property. Basically, coming up with an equivalency increase in impervious area, much as we would do in anybody's individual home. So we did that on, another, we'll go back to that slide, we did that on a condom- I'm sorry about that. We did that on a condominium association with a roadway network on its own property, and then divided it up to the houses, but then you ask yourself the question that, well, what's the impact for those private ways? And this was a question raised at the last meeting. What's the impact on private ways that serve only houses along that way, that were built with waivers from the planning board to build narrower roadways, steeper roadways, roadways that meander, that may be perhaps devoid of curbing, a lesser sidewalk, but in many instances, don't meet the requirements of the town's regulations, and as such, would never be accepted as ways, yet benefit all these people. So if it were fair to what was done to fill Fuller Village, and similarly, Winter Valley, and then taken over to a situation like what we're looking at here at Home, Inc., which by the way, is exactly the same situation at Quistit Brook, just further down the road, you'd ask yourself the question, well, why wouldn't you use that same technique on private ways? And I think that was the question that was asked of us at the last meeting. So this is one example of a private way. And much to MAPC's chagrin, Milton is unique in a lot of ways, and one way that we're completely unique is, for a small community, we have an awful lot of private ways, over seventy, which is astronomical. So the impact of what I'm about to say kind of reverberated through the calculation in a great significant manner. But this is one right here, this is one that was approved recently by the planning board, Mary Webster Way, that's the old Milton Women's Club site. Road too narrow, no full cul-de-sac at the end, insufficient width, and so on. It served only the purpose of getting these four lots in, didn't serve any other municipal purpose. So in this instance, we looked at what you're seeing in gray, dark gray, I think I have two slides here. I do. Good. So you're seeing in dark gray is within that orangish-red, ochre-colored, scribed layout of a way, you're seeing what's called Mary Webster Lane, which is a paved impervious surface, and the original calculation not counted. Yet, you, its only purpose is in fact to serve these four lots, which in gray shows the driveways serving those lots, which was counted. So again, being consistent with those other two situations we spoke of, condominiums prescribed layout, and condominiums with simply driveway and roadway networks on their own property, we thought it was also fair to look at these types of prescribed layouts, private ways, take that impervious area, and in this instance, take the total area and divide it simply by the number four, i.e. four lots, and add that additional pervious area to each of the individual lots. And we did that on every single private way over the seventy, in all of town. So the analysis over the past two weeks now has been to get that number understood in a very consistent manner, and based on that consistency, to then go back and revisit some of the methodologies of how we applied the fee in the past, and moreover, take those new revised impervious areas, and now add those other comments that were raised, such as multiple tiers. Two tiers for residential, we thought was, the questions raised from the folks were, perhaps that's too narrow, might you consider three, might you consider four? So we went back and in fact considered four, to see if we could see what that impact was. So with that being said, and again, this just as the last slide that I have, it shows now that this entire area includes the buildings, the driveways, the roadway, spread to the various units. That concludes my part of how we got to where we are, and once the folks in my department did finish their fabulous work, we passed it off to MAPC, whose analysts did even more magic that I can't even describe, but Martin certainly can, and he's about to do that.
Thank you, Joe. And for the record again, my name is Martin Pillsbury, I'm the- Thank you, Joe, and for the record again, my name is Martin Pillsbury, I'm the Director of Environmental Planning at the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, and just to remind folks, we're involved in providing planning, technical assistance to the town on this and other stormwater issues over the last eighteen or months or so. Uh, and it's been a pleasure to work with Joe and his, his staff, and Alan Bishop and the GIS, uh, because they've actually, uh, been very professional in putting together information that we could then help them analyze. And I'm not the person who did this analysis, our data analyst is, so I'm speaking on her behalf, who she's not here tonight. Uh, if there's any detailed technical questions, I'll take those back to her. Uh, but I, I wanna just, uh, take the, take a step back and remind folks about the overarching framework about how this was calculated. So this first couple of slides reiterates what we said a month or so ago at the last, and then we'll show what's changed. So the idea is, we, we figure out how much total impervious surface there is in the whole town. One thing that's changed is because of bringing in the DCR parking lots, which we didn't have before, that was one of the things, things Joe just mentioned, and then the other thing, bringing in all of the impervious associated with these various private ways, that had the effect of increasing the total amount of impervious surface that we're counting here. It's now one thousand and fifty-two acres in the town, and it was, a month ago when we were here, about eight hundred and eighty-five acres. So there's a pretty significant increase in the total. Um, one good thing about that is that with a larger base to calculate from, but the same amount of funding that we're trying to spread over that, it actually reduces the amount a little bit per property on the commercial and, and residential, because we've put more into the, the tax exempt under the DCR category. So you'll see how that looks in a minute. So that's just the starting point, we're looking at all of the impervious, and the base we have now is a little bit larger, going from eight hundred and eighty-four acres to ten, ten fifty-two acres total. So, uh, to remind folks about how we do that, so we basically determine the fee per hundred square feet of impervious surface, uh, across the whole town, uh, and we have a revenue-based, the revenue goal that, that was the budget that, that Joe had set for the, for the stormwater for the next year, seven hundred and five thousand dollars, and we're really just now dividing that out by the amount of impervious surface, which again, now is ten fifty-two acres, although we expressed this in square feet, in hundred square feet, and it all works out when you do a few calculations, to about thirty-eight cents per one hundred square feet, uh, per quarter, in, in terms of a fee system. By the way, that number was forty-six cents before we added this additional work, so this has the effect of lowering the rate per, per square foot, because we have more square feet to spread that same amount of money over. If anyone has any questions about this, I know we're starting to get to a little, almost having a math formula here, but that's the basic concept, it's not too complicated. Total amount of money, total amount of acreage of impervious, divided out, what's the amount of, what's that rate per hundred square feet? It's now thirty-eight cents per hundred square feet, and we've been able to lower it by including more of the DCR land. So then, we come to looking at, uh, the, so then, the way of allocating that cost over the categories of land use. And so as a starter, this is where we were a month ago, this is the same starting point we had, where we had essentially two residential tiers, and then three other categories, what we call residential other, which is largely multifamily residential, because these residential tiers are single family, the multifamily, the commercial, and the tax exempt. Uh, and what we did was, then, it, we'll, we'll show you, if you just keep an eye on that nine and twenty-four dollars, the smaller residential was nine dollars per quarter, the larger residential was twenty-four dollars per quarter. Now we'll show you what the, the tiers look like when we make all of these changes we've just talked about, and we have four residential tiers. So instead of it being nine and twenty-four, we have the, a lower, lower than nine, on the low end of that, at six dollars, for the smallest, and what we have here is roughly the first twenty-five percent, the next twenty-five percent of the properties, the third twenty-five percent, and the highest. And that range now is six, nine, thirteen, and thirty-nine, where it used to be just two tiers of nine and twenty-four. Essentially think of it like taking the nine and splitting that into two tiers, six and nine, and taking the twenty-four they had before and splitting that higher part into two tiers, which is now thirteen and thirty-nine. These are quarterly rates for the four different residential terms. And it seems to us, when we talked about this in, in our meetings, uh, that this is, uh, was suggested by someone here at that last meeting, that when we calculated these numbers, we thought this actually did look like a good idea, uh, to give a little more refinement, uh, and to especially at the, at the lower end, to reduce, for the very smaller properties, to reduce even more what, what their costs would be. That's for the residential, and you'll see then on the right lower side, uh, for the other non-residential sites, uh, we have, what we have basically here is a different way of calculating these, in that each of these would be calculated on the, exactly how many square feet they actually have on each parcel. Uh, and then just to show you what that range would be, is, we are showing you the, the twenty-fifth percentile, the fiftieth percentile, or the median, the seventy-fifth, and the maximum, under each of these four categories. Now let me back up one minute, and the same group, like for instance, look at the, uh, look at the residential other, eleven, thirteen, sixteen, and what we had last time was twelve, fifteen, eighteen. So it all, they all came down a little bit because of that adding, you know, a dollar or two, not a huge amount, but it did, by adding that additional, uh, non-residential base into the, into the calculation from the DCR property being brought in, it reduces all of these categories by about a dollar or two per quarter. So that's what the, that's what this, uh, overarching, uh, set of changes has results in, the combination of adding more of the DCR land, of adding the private ways, and then recalculating the residential on four tiers instead of two. And that basically is, is the work, I think, that Joe and the, and the committee have put together. I guess we're open to any questions.
Okay. Um, before I open up to questions, uh, for anybody that wasn't here last night, you know, basically, we made this decision to, to, uh, and town meeting approved it, to, uh, take stormwater management, which is a, a federal mandate, take it out of the operating budget, and move it into a separate utility. The benefit from that was twofold, number one, it, it avoided an override for this year, uh, which I, I think was, was pretty big. Uh, number two, it allowed us, once we took it out of the property tax calculation, to, um, to, and move it into a utility, to be able to, uh, to bill the not-for-profit organizations, uh, and, you know, who also have, you know, create some of the stormwater that we have to deal with, um, to actually have them pay their fair share. So it had the impact of reducing the cost to the residential taxpayer. Uh, and, and again, whether it was in a utility, the way we're proposing now, or in the operating budget, the, the dollar cost is gonna be the same, it's just how it gets shared. So with that, uh, I will open it up for any comments, questions, or, yeah, Joe, uh, if you wanna come up, otherwise nobody hears you.
Hi, Joe Murphy from, uh, Home Inc., Treasurer, and, and I'm just trying to have an idea of what we might be looking at, this, we have, you, you have, you had us up on the things, you know how many units we have, and how much, how much driveway and impervious surface we have, and I wonder if there's any way we can have just an idea so that we can be able to tell our, our, uh, people, you know, maybe where the rent's gonna go next year or whatever, because that, that, that is important to us, that's all. That would be a big help if someone could give us that.
I don't know if we can do that immediately here, but, um, but we could certainly get that information very easily.
Okay, yeah, I, I. I just given Joe my business card, I can't answer that from here. Uh, the analysis still is, even though we did it site-specific all across town, we were still dealing with a total number, it's still, it's still within the realm of planning, we just keep honing closer and closer to that answer. Uh, but the answer of what that total impervious area is, and what it might look like, presuming that the fee structure we just talked about might be what we're going to, we could have a dialogue. But I can't, I'm not prepared to have that tonight, only just I, I don't have that data.
Sure.
Um, I'm just curious, can we go back to that previous slide on the, the different rates? Uh, again, I'm also trying to estimate for a, a nonprofit, what we might expect to pay, and I, I'm, so I'm interested in the tax-exempt bottom line there, and, um, are those different, are those actually different rates for the different percentiles?
Actually.
Or is it just based on the?
It's because you have properties. What you see with the tax exempt, bottom line here, six, twenty-two, you're just looking at the spectrum of the smallest to the largest properties, and picking out the percentile points as examples. But each property would actually, under this system, have its own individual rate, based on how many hundreds of square feet that actual property has.
Right.
So you might fall somewhere in between one of these two points.
But do you know what the rate would be for?
The rate would be thirty-eight cents per one hundred square feet of impervious surface on any one given parcel. Thirty-eight cents per one hundred.
So in a nonprofit, which nonprofit are you?
East Congressional Church.
Okay. So you would have obviously your roofs, you've got a couple of park, parking lots, and you know, some little walkway.
And actually, we have those data, we just right here can't call that out immediately, but it wouldn't be that hard to then look some of these up.
The problem, the, the paper was incorrectly said, first said something like forty-eight per, per square foot.
Oh, yeah. Per hundred, it's per hundred.
Which is very expensive.
Forty-eight, six, it's thirty-eight, so even less.
I mean, the thing we can't, the only thing we can tell you, that at least that I know right now, is that big number in the very bottom corner, the two thousand nine seventy-nine is DCR.
And that's a great point, Tom, I was just about to make that. I can make a generalized statement, that the, the effect of adding in DCR roads and spreading out the other types of roadways that we spoke of, had the effect across the board of lowering the other tax-exempt, smaller users' total fee that they would pay, because we've added in the higher fee on their behalf. So whatever it was three weeks ago is now lower, but if you give me a call, I can give you a square footage and apply that thirty-eight cents per hundred to it.
Thank you very much.
And again, these are still preliminary, but, you know, we can have that conversation.
Chris?
And I have a question on the residential other, so I own a two-family, and I guess I, I wasn't able to come to the last meeting, I'd like to understand why, why there's a different rate, and how you came about that.
We had talked about that, whether to put two families, and, and, and we may still do that, whether to put two families into the res, residential tier as opposed to residential other, because within residential other right now are two threes, and then, um, you know, big condominium complexes, you know, like, uh, eighty-eight Worf is in there, uh, I don't know what else is in there, but.
Everything else, everything size, single family.
Right. Uh, and, and when you really think of, especially a two-family, it's, it's more closely akin to a, a single-family residence. It has a driveway, and it has a roof, and in most cases, that's about it, you know? So it, it could easily be moved from one to the other. So we talked about the, the two and threes of perhaps doing that.
Okay, so I guess I just, when you decide that, just curious to why you separated them, or what the logic was, if there was any, so.
The, well, the, the logic was, um, for the single-family simplicity, so all, so the single families are, are a very, very blended rate, um, uh, because there are just so many of them to try and actually, you know, we could actually give everybody their own specific bill, um, and it, it's accurate for a, you know, a snapshot in time, but impervious areas change over a period of time, and we're, we're certainly not going to calculate impervious surface, you know, weekly, or even yearly, it's probably gonna be more like every five years or, or, or so that we will do a recalculation. So the single-family residential, uh, is, is a blended rate, so everybody that's in the, uh, basically the first quarter in terms of size of homes is gonna pay six dollars a, a quarter, um, you know, the, the middle tier is, is nine, um, you know, from fifty to seventy-five percent is thirteen, and so on and so forth. Uh, and, and that's regardless of, you know, your, your house could be, you know, have, you know, uh, say fifteen hundred square feet of impervious, or, or twenty-five hundred, you know? You know, it's, that kind of range. So we could do that for the two families.
Okay, so when would you know that, or is that something you'd share before you confirm?
That's something certainly before we have our next meeting, we'll make that decision.
Okay.
Could I make a comment on that? In practical terms, however, if you're in the two-family, and you're in either the eleven-dollar or thirteen-dollar category, and we calculated you and put you into one of the tiers, you'd probably end up in the nine or thirteen, it's not gonna have a very measurable difference in what the actual bill would be. I mean, you could do it, but.
In all likelihood, that's probably where you are with the two-family, too, is, is, in the twenty, the twenty-fifth to the fiftieth.
Yes, right.
So the lower rate, the eleven is calculation based on the square foot, of what those first twenty-five percent have been into, or?
The, the eleven is the, the twenty-fifth, you know, so, so, and, and everybody in, in the residential other, their rate is calculated based upon their impervious surface, so, um, a, again, it's gonna be that, that thirty-eight cents, uh.
Exactly, exactly, and, um, don't think of the horizontal portion with the percentile shown, don't think of it as a rate, think of that as what the quarterly payment would be if you fell within that twenty-fifth percentile, or the median percentile, or the seventy-fifth, or the, of the highest one you would pay. Think of it that way. However, on the residential single-family, those are in fact, rates that, not rates, excuse me, again, fees that would be paid on a quarterly basis, if you fell within the bandwidth of impervious area in each of those tiers. So the statements are correct, that it is strictly single-family, and that's strictly an analysis of that, assesses data coding, in, in a manner of breaking out that additional coding to look at multifamilies, we just haven't done it yet. Uh, we've, we actually, we've actually debated, not even debated, we discussed it at great length, and we think it's, it's, it's a fair thing to do. It's not alien to the Board of Selectmen, uh, we've done something similar with water and sewer for multifamilies of certain units and above, if you recall. So, you know, we, we're pledging to do that.
I guess I, I have a question about, so the single families.
Could you come up, Chris? We'd like just giving you the exercise of walking.
So the single families are not being charged at the square foot?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, but the residential other are?
That's correct.
So the eleven dollars is just a?
Guess mark.
A, a guess mark, it's not really eleven dollars.
That is correct.
The first one are gonna pay whatever the square foot, okay, that's, I just, so that's what, this chart is a little.
Well, first off, to answer, they're all based upon square footage, um, of impervious. Uh, the, the single families, though, we just broke them into tiers, so that, so that everybody in that first tier pays the same, even though their exact amount of impervious may be different.
And, uh, we keep saying what this is, what this is, is an evolving process, this is the next step from where we were several weeks ago, and there'll be another step beyond that. And we talked, we, we've been meeting regularly, but Tom said in a conference call this afternoon, and, and we did, we discussed, you know, what do we do with multifamilies, and we thought it would be something worth looking at. So we, that would be the next section of evolution.
So I, this may have been discussed at the previous meeting, but I'm curious about what happens following on years in terms of the prices, is it, um, what, what keeps the, this under kind of control in terms of growing? You know, we look at our water bills that way, like they're out of control, so.
Yes, I, I, unlike water bills, I mean, it, it, it is an unfunded mandate, there's no question about that. Um, you, we, we don't have the outside influence of an MWRRA with respect to, and, and if you look at the water rates, you know, ninety percent of that is, is, is driven by the MWRRA, what they charge us for water. This is all internal, uh, you know, so it's, it's all our employees, uh, you know, our efforts. It, it's, it's not stable, but it's relatively stable. We're certainly not going to build up a big surplus in this thing, well, you know, that's not the intent, the intent is just to get the job done that we have to get done under the permit, which, you know, uh, requires monitoring and, um, you know, testing of, of water, you know, um, the, the water quality, sweeping the streets multiple times a year, um, you know, various other things that, that are just required under this permit. There will be a capital component that's gonna kick in, um, we have been, you know, we've got a, a fairly substantial, um, stormwater drain, um, modernization project, for lack of anything better, that, you know, our, our system's ancient, and, um, and, you know, to try and bring it up to better standards. Uh, we've been spending about, in some years, a half million dollars, this year we spent three hundred thousand. We didn't bring all that debt service into this thing, we left it back in the operating budget, but as new debt service comes on with respect to storm, stormwater, that will wind up in the utility. So, so there will be that increase going forward.
Are town properties about?
Town roadways are. Town roadways are because everybody uses them, so, you know, and, you know, so to call it a town roadway and build a town for it kind of didn't make any sense.
But the properties are... But all other properties are included. All other properties are included, including my DPW yard.
Okay.
Yes.
And as far as control of the budget, I mean, it's even more controlled than what stormwater used to be in the past, inasmuch as stormwater is now an enterprise. Town Meeting in the wintertime took care of that and created that. So it's going to stand on its own, it's going to be autonomous, it's going to be auditable, and more importantly, it's going to have to come in and be vetted on its own face value by the Selectmen, by the Warrant Committee, and then by Town Meeting. The various capital projects that Tom referred to, as they move forward in the future, has to also go through, all of that, including before that, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. So, you know, those things are all well-vetted out in advance. The only thing that's somewhat out of our control is what the mandate coming from the federal government ultimately requires. The abstract permit that was going to be out any day is now out. It's been out for three weeks. So we now know exactly what the permit is. It's final, it's on the street, and it's official. There's a ramping up, so there will be, over a couple of years, ramping up into the newer, broader requirements of this permit, not in a real aggressive way. So, you know, those are the sorts of things that are going to be coming before us. But all of that is under the town's own control, and it's under our own destiny, like Tom had alluded to, not through the MWRRA simply saying, here's your assessment. We get to say whether we want to fully comply, we want to aggressively comply, we want to exceed the stormwater permission by the EPA. We get to decide that as a community, and that's how we control the costs as we move forward.
I have a couple of questions.
We got one more. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Fred Kibble, Governors Road. My question is more on policing down the road. This is a utility, but unlike a water supply system, you can't shut off a non-payment. It's not a tax, so you can't, I don't know, can you put a lien on the property if you don't pay it? Is that...
Yes.
You still can. Okay.
It'd be the same as any other utility, it's lienable.
Okay, thank you.
One more.
My name is Renee Ruiz. I represent the Stonebridge Lane Homeowners Association. I'm the treasurer. And my question is about the nature of the utility fee. When I first read about it in the Milton Times, I was under the impression that it was more like a user fee or a typical utility whereby, you know, one pays based on the amount of a resource that one uses. I pay per kilowatt hour of electricity, per gallon of water, or something like that. So I see in the informative presentation that the budget for the utility is seven-hundred-and-five-thousand dollars, and I assume this goes to satisfying whatever EPA requirements, you know, they put forward. So any drop of water that ends up in Milton's municipal stormwater drainage system, which I imagine is mostly concentrated in East Milton or the other densely populated areas of town, that has to be treated in a particular way before it is dumped into, you know, the Napponset River or wherever it exits. And like you said, street sweeping, water quality testing, that sort of thing. But a lot of the properties in town, especially in District Five and in particular on Stonebridge Lane, do not have runoff that physically drains into our municipal stormwater management system. Stonebridge has a couple of drains. One is a hole in the ground, and the other one is a drain on the bridge that drains directly into the waterway that goes underneath the bridge on Stonebridge Lane. And so my question about the nature of the fee is what, you know, is this a situation whereby properties like the ones on Stonebridge Lane are essentially asked to subsidize the stormwater runoff, you know, that is going directly into the municipal stormwater drainage system that goes, you know, into whatever treatment we're paying for under the seven-hundred-thousand-dollar budget? Or is there some benefit that will be extended to, you know, residences like those on Stonebridge Lane, which, you know, we all sit on a private way? You know, most of the water that runs off my house, I live at number nine, that just goes, you know, directly into the ground. So, I mean, is there some kind of street sweeping that will be done, you know, on Stonebridge, which is a private way? Is there water quality testing that's going to be done in our neighborhood? Or is this essentially just a backdoor way of taxing our properties based on square footage?
Okay, I can answer some of that. I'll let Joe answer some of the questions, but first of all, whether it's in a separate utility or not, if we left it in the operating budget, then you're probably, you're paying for it, you're paying for it in your real estate taxes.
Yep.
Same number. It's in there, and there's absolutely no, you know, no consideration of whether you do any mitigation, whether you, how much impervious surface you have. It's just the value of your house. That's what dictates what percentage you pay. Moving it out at least gives a little bit better. There's a little bit more correlation. Not a perfect system. We all admit, it's not perfect. You know, we don't have a meter that can measure it. You know, if we did, we'd use it, but we don't. So the best thing we have, and we all use the roadways. So even if you have no stormwater discharge, you've got a car that's out in the roadway, you're causing some stormwater problems. You know, how much? I don't know. But some. So the only way we have, the only correlation we have is impervious surface. You know, we've talked about perhaps, and we'll definitely look at it, of, you know, giving some kind of credit back to people that do some kind of, you know, stormwater mitigation on their properties. They're probably, we've got to look at what other towns and what other parts of the country do. It's relevantly new to this part of the country. There's only, you know, a handful of stormwater utilities out there. There will be more, I think, as, you know, and there are several communities looking at it right now. So, you know, in the future, we will look at it. The problem is, it's a fixed cost. It really, to the extent you mitigate, really doesn't change what the town has to pay much. So how do we, you know, how do we incentivize you for, you know, doing something good, you know, without just pushing it off on somebody else? That becomes the real question, and that's what we're struggling with. Now, Joe, I'll let you answer the rest of the questions with respect to...
I think you did a real good job covering down there all of the answers. The point that I think is very important is that the roadway network, you know, as you leave your house, you're traveling to work, you know, to and from work, or to the grocery store, or to the theater, or whatever, you are on the roadway network. And so we all are using the town's infrastructure. We're all enjoying and benefiting from or penalized by the impact of complying with stormwater standards, you know, at the national level. Well, this process has been for better part of a year now is looking at the methodology of how do we parse it out and how do we distribute across in a fair and equitable manner. And there is no perfect, we're hearing this cliche frequently tonight, there's no perfect answer. There are some that are more fair than others, there are some that grossly unfair. There are some that are very, very fair to some people and grossly unfair to others. And I don't want to be abstract, but the situation of can't we simply do this on a per parcel basis or per square acre basis? Well, DCR, who's mostly open space, would certainly scream about that, yet the person in East Milton may very much enjoy the benefit of paying, you know, maybe a dollar or two less. So what we've really done is tried to take a great effort and tried to find a way to spread that total cost around to all property owners who all enjoy the benefits of all of those situations that we use, whether they're roadways or other open spaces owned by the town, all those things that we use that aren't property-specific like schools. So that was how we got to where we are. The other piece of this is, I mean, so Brad Schwan, I may not know your neighborhood, but he may know it a little bit. One of the TMDLs, Total Maximum Daily Lowes, that we have to look at in the Napponset River is bacteria. In the course of this very costly undertaking of tracing bacteria from the river up through the watershed, through the piping system, we come to equestrian landowners. There's the neighborhood, right? So there's a great effort of that water that may be perfectly well-managed equestrian property, yet has bacteria runoff that finds its way to this waterway and finds its way to the Napponset that we have to deal with. So yes, this is going to be a heightened analysis, perhaps, depending if the bacteria dissipates before we get up the plume. That demonstrates that those properties are in fact clean, and we don't need to go any further. But that's the types of things that we need to undertake as this permit flows forward over the next five years. I'm not sure if there were any other questions, something?
No, that's good. I mean, it sounds like there's some water quality testing in the neighborhood, so, you know, so there's a benefit. I mean, you know, if I could make one comment, I appreciate the difficulty in spreading this cost out. It does, and I mean this with all due respect, it strikes me as a little bit of a backdoor way around the two-and-a-half override. I mean, you mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting, you know, we have this fixed cost and we need to spread it out. I mean, that's the definition of a tax. But, I mean, you know, stormwater runoff is a serious environmental issue, and, you know, in no way do I mean to suggest that we on Stonebridge Lane don't take that seriously. I mean, I think we're all on the same page that, you know, we need to test our waterways and keep it clean, so thank you.
Thank you. Ken, you have a question?
Well, I do. It's mainly just a follow-up on some of the questions from March. I think Joe and your latest answers have kind of touched on them, but just for the sake of the people who asked them, one question that came up was whether, this is based on using the square footage of the impervious base, what about using the square footage of just the lot? And another question was, somebody at the last meeting was trying to distinguish between surface that's contributing or not contributing to runoff. And I think what they were talking about was driveways that because of the pitch or the angle that they're at, they're not, those driveways are actually putting the stormwater into either their own grass, their own front lawn, and not into the roads. So I didn't hear answers to those, Joe. If I, you may have said something and I missed it, but I just wanted to be sure...
Actually, the answer to the last question I just made was exactly that.
That's what, yeah. You touched on it, but I just wanted to be sure that for people who had those questions that were...
So impervious area, regardless of which direction it flows, whether it's to the roadway or directly to the piped system, it doesn't matter. The impervious area contributes to runoff as a whole. So regardless of the direction of flow, this analysis looks at all impervious area on all lots the same way, absent of any direction of flow. Which is pretty customary. The second part of that was on the square foot basis, on a per-lot basis. We did look at that. We ruled it out almost immediately as being, unbased on any impervious area whatsoever. You would penalize in a huge way the DCR, who has the largest landowner in town, yet is also, has the hold of the most open space in town without impervious area. So the methodology that we did was, you know, hit them, hit them, but hit the analysis with actual hard impervious areas, roofs, driveways, parking lots, paved paths, but taking out the roadways that, again, we all enjoy.
If I could add to that, Joe, and, you know, the idea of doing it on a, just a square footage of the lot basis, really, it takes away any correlation between, you know, of what causes stormwater runoff. At least there's a correlation when you use impervious surface. Quite the opposite, what you'd have then if somebody had a five-thousand-square-foot lot, decided to pave the entire lot, and then you've got somebody with a two-acre lot with just a driveway in it, you're charging the guy with the two acres who has less impervious surface.
Little contribution.
Yeah, more than, you know, and clearly, that wouldn't be fair either.
Yeah, another resident at the March meeting suggested the linear frontage be the, that, I'm sure you're going to have an answer very similar to the one you just gave, but that was what someone else had suggested. And I just wanted to be sure, because we said at the last meeting...
It's in my notes, we did...
We're going to follow up on these questions.
Yeah, it's in my notes, in fact, from the last meeting. In fact, we did consider it, you know, in a very brief sense, and again, ruled it out for the exact same reason, that it had no consideration for the impervious surface whatsoever. You could have a long, narrow, excuse me, a long, deep lot, like many of the states on Canton Avenue, that proportionally has negligible frontage, yet has extremely long driveways and extremely large roof areas. So it would not account for those.
So, Joe, just another follow-up question. For clarity purposes, crushed stone would be considered impervious?
It is, it is.
It is considered, yeah. I'd heard from some residents saying, well, if I have a crushed stone, you know, driveway, that won't be considered.
We had a person who raised that question at the last meeting, who specifically asked that, and we said we would go back and look at it because I didn't know the answer to the question. What we did find was that some gravel crushed stone driveways were in fact considered to be not counted, and some in fact were counted. But the more we looked at it, and we look at it from an engineering perspective as well as a land planning perspective, or environmental land planning perspective, is that even crushed stone has an aspect of runoff to it. And maintaining that crushed stone in a free, impermeable manner takes a lot of effort. So the person who puts a crushed stone driveway in doesn't on an annual basis fluff it up and regrade it and keep it flowing well. So over time, it degrades. So we have now, uniformly considered all gravel driveways, like any other driveway, and have included them as impervious. So they're consistently done. We may disagree on that answer, but now they're least consistent, which they were not a few weeks ago.
Joe, at the last meeting, too, there was, one person had a question about the style of roof, whether it's a flat roof or a sloped roof, and what impact would that have? Did you give any further thoughts of that?
Yes. It's polygonic projection. It's straight-down view, so regardless of your flat, it's that area that's visible from the top. And you think about a raindrop falling, if it hit that angle, it's still the same amount of rain hitting either a flat surface or a shed surface. It's still the same amount of rain that hits the eaves of that roof, and that's what's covered. That's what was, that's done on a consistent basis.
Okay. And the rain barrels, what I heard Tom say is that that's something for consideration at a later date, but what would be the process of considering that, or rain gardens, or other mitigating factors?
At this point, we don't know. We don't know how to do it, and that's where I think we're going to have to reach out to other communities and see how you do it fairly. Because for all intents and purposes, even though you're doing a great job controlling your own stormwater, you do nothing in terms of reducing our costs. You know, because most of our cost is sweeping the streets and testing and then, you know, the mitigation process if we find the IDI thing and...
That's actually the dichotomy that we face, is that the, we don't want to de-incentivize doing the right thing in the future. We don't want to discourage people, well, why bother doing it? I'm going to get charged for it anyway. So I think there ought to be, as we move forward, some sort of relief for promoting certain types of things. Maybe it's a pool of money, that's, maybe it's a pool of the fee that's available every given year that's set within the budget, in that it's allowed to be out to promote these types of things on a competitive, not competitive, but on a, as people bring them forward. What I caution to say is that, and again, it's not my policy decision, I'm just standing here recognizing we have to administer something pretty darn quickly. I think in the first year, it's almost impossible to talk about any sort of credit system. I think the first year, you let the system run the way it does, look at what that impact is, give us the ability to look at a credit system, and then as the next year's fee moves out, the fee calculation doesn't differ. I think it's just how it is, do we offer those credits back? And credit simply is just another operating expense. It adds to the total cost, whatever, making up a number, fifty thousand dollars available on an annual basis to give out to credits. So the fee doesn't change the operating cost. It doesn't raise less revenue than you want, but it also provides that incentive as you move forward. And that's one way I envision it. So specifically, what do you do for a rain barrel? What do you do for a well-maintained gravel driveway? What do you do for other types of systems like rain gardens and whatnot? I think, you know, are all out there esoterically, but definitively, how do you make that as a credit? We're not prepared to embark upon that yet.
Do you know, Joe, I know there's only a handful of other towns that have adopted these stormwater fees, but do you know if any of them have looked into that, or have any of them implemented any...
Reading only.
You know, Newton has, I think, as well, I think Newton has a bunch of complicated abatement information on the town. But it's really, it's complicated stuff. It's not...
Newton, and Newton was one of the original seven, correct?
Yes.
It was, yeah. And Newton's probably had a stormwater utility for at least five years, if not longer. Up around, they're up at Charles, so their TMDLs are far, far more aggressive than simply our bacteria. So actually, as up at Charles Watershed, they were obligated and the EPA targeted as one of the seven communities who had to do something. There was a small community of towns and cities that, under EPA requirements, had to do something very specific, and I think Newton was one of them. And I think Newton was one of them.
You might know the answer to this, Tom, but, Joe, how, among the four residential, the single-family home residential categories, tiers that you've come up with, and last time we were only talking about two, how you, do you have any idea of how that would be broken down?
It was based on the impervious, I'm going to talk general terms because I don't have specific numbers. It was based on the total impervious area within the single-family property classes and then broken into percentiles, the basically 25%, the next 25, the next 25, and the next 25, based on that total square footage, or square acreage, if you will, of impervious area. So within bandwidth, we said if you were up from zero up to a certain level, that was the first tier, if you will, from that tier to the next one and so on and so forth up to the largest one. So they're basically broken into the total impervious area, divided by the number of single-family units, and then broken into the, statistically broken into what's that square footage within each of those four bandwidths.
So theoretically, there should be as many homes in each one, you know, how many that is?
I don't think it's home number. I think it's impervious area.
Well, but it's, I think the way they did it was just cut off and just broken into quarters.
Not by home count, based on impervious area.
Okay, so the top 25% of.
If you have a million acres of residential, single-family residential, theoretically, there'd be 250,000 square acres in each of the tiers.
Yeah, gotcha, okay.
And then that acreage divided by that 38 cents to get the, within the band.
Okay, thank you.
Trying to understand the spirit of the EPA, what they're really trying to accomplish. So I'm curious too, because we're in a place where we do have the high water bills because we don't really tend to have groundwater problems. Is this to address groundwater drinking problems? Or is it the quality of the runoff that gets into the streams? Just that, not the groundwater?
This is actually a permit under the Clean Water Act, which is a national, federal act. It's the same act that regulates anyone who might be discharging a single point like a wastewater treatment plant or a factory that has an outfall. Except now, they're also going after regulating discharges to water bodies like the Nippon City River that are coming from the stormwater from streets. That's the difference in this permit, which started back in 2003. Prior to that, they only went after the large single-point discharges. But it's the same law, Clean Water Act, and what really applies are the pollutant loads that are coming from these sources of stormwater. And getting those pollutant loads down is kind of the major overarching goal for here. And in each river, not each river, but in many rivers around the state and around the country, specific pollution goals have been set where there's a particular problem. And in the case of the Nippon City watershed here, as Joe just mentioned a minute ago, bacteria is the primary pollutant of concern, although there are concerns about phosphorus and other pollutants as well. But that's the one that actually has a regulatory bite to it. So the town really does have to take measures which will, over time, reduce the bacteria and other pollutants to the, you know, and the goal is cleaning water for those rivers and streams for, you know, not only the main stem of the Nippon City, but Pine Tree Brook and all the other tributaries, all the way down to where it goes into the harbor. And it's really the idea of getting, over time, most and/or if not all of our rivers to meet the quality standards of the Clean Water Act, which, by the way, now, after over 40 years, they're not meeting that standard in most cases.
Questions? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Give it a second.
Actually, you know, Joe has, if it has a hint of a second because I don't have it. It's on his, it's on.
Is it private, where it's a dirt road also?
I would like to, well, I don't think it's a dirt road. Joe, are there private roads that are both dirt roads?
Do you want to take a break until they clear out?
Yeah, I know. Okay, item eight on the agenda is approval of taxi license renewals. And we have a couple of cab renewal licenses.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the following taxi cab licenses for 2016. CWC Taxi Incorporated doing business as Milton Cab Company, 10 Des Moines Road, Quincy. Eight taxi cab licenses, Parkway Cab, Inc., 16 Alf, Alf, Alfus Road, Rosendale, one taxi cab license.
A second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item nine is board and committee appointments. Milton Village slash Central Ave Revitalization Committee.
I'll move that we appoint Everett I. Hayward of 26 Elliott Street to the Milton Village Central Ave Revitalization Committee to serve through April 2017.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Item 10, Town Administrator Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind you in public that town meeting starts Monday, May 2nd at 7:30 at the Milton High School. In addition to that, at your last meeting, you had asked that we reach out to the Swift Hat Committee to have them into a meeting to give an update. We did reach out to the committee and they asked if they could wait and come into a meeting in late June. There's a group from Harvard University that's doing a study of that property down at the Waff area. And they're supposed to present to the Swift Hat House at their meeting June 9th. And so the Swift Hat House would like to listen to that report before coming in to speak with you. So we will have them in, but it will be into a late June meeting.
Okay, DPW Open House?
DPW Open House is May 14th, Saturday, May 14th.
Okay. Encourage everybody, that's always a good time.
It's a great time, yes. It is, it's a great family event.
Especially for the kids, yeah.
Yes. And then they also have that Larry DiSella Award as well, presented at that open house.
Okay, Chair's Report. Not much report, but I did obviously want to congratulate Katie on her election victory. I want to congratulate Richard Wells as well and his team on running a very good campaign, I thought. And if somebody has to win, somebody has to lose. But I thought you did run a very good campaign. Members' Reports.
So I too want to congratulate Katie on her victory. And again, as the Chair said, want to thank Richard Wells for running such a positive and good, strong campaign. I think it was good to bring out a lot of the issues and it makes the town stronger when you have a race like that. But I also want to thank all the town meeting members or candidates and those who were elected for running. I think that, you know, one of the things that I set out over a year ago when I ran for election was to try to educate and get more young families involved in government because sometimes you don't realize what government means until you need it. And it was pretty obvious this year that a lot of young people got active and we're going to have some new faces at town meeting. And I think that it's going to serve the town well.
Yeah, I totally agree. I thought that was amazing that, you know,